...the audience regarding items for future consideration. This is a school board business meeting, so if you have comments now to make, that would be the only time that you are able to make comments tonight. All right, we'll move on to number three. Consent agenda. Three A, approval of youth option requests. B, approval of September 24 and October 8, 2012, school board meeting minutes. And three C, approval of October vouchers and vouchers payable. Anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove C, please.
Anyone else? Then can I have a motion to approve A and B?
No need.
TJ, is there a second?
Second.
Stephanie? Motion and a second to approve A and B on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, Bernie?
On the vouchers payable, the $20,000 disbursement to Miles Pro Audio for the gymnasium audio equipment, was that for work completed already or to date? Or, you know, where are we in terms of that? That's like three quarters of the entire contract, if not more. I always get concerned when we pay out more than the works completed.
That was the request made to purchase the equipment for Miles Pro.
Okay.
They specifically in writing requested the $20,000 to make purchase of the equipment to get started.
So have they started the work yet?
It's almost finished.
It is?
Yes.
And we've made no other dispersments besides this 20 to them?
No.
Okay, okay. And when do they anticipate the work to be completed?
They anticipated it. I didn't go down there and look today. They worked all day Saturday, I believe, with the installation of an additional 20-amp circuit, which was requested by them to ensure the integrity of the system. That was installed this morning at 7:00 a.m. I believe that the system is complete and now we will schedule a walk through.
Okay.
We won't be invoiced for the remainder of it until we receive the training that is part of the contract.
Thank you, Rick. Then the only other question I have regarding the vouchers was, and maybe this will be covered in the block party wrap-up, we did have dispersments from the school district for some items related to that. I'm going to assume, A, that they'll be covered in the wrap-up, and B, that we get, that the school district gets reimbursed for those items? Is that true or not?
Correct. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I don't think, you would know better than me.
Whoever, okay. Then I have no other questions, and I move to approve the vouchers as submitted.
All right. I'm in favor of approving C. Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. We'll go on to old business, number four. A, traffic update.
Okay. Just wanted to bring everybody an update. I know that I've sent some emails to the board and copied the board on some of the emails, and we've spent between Doug and myself and Matt Carstner, for your employees, many hours observing the traffic issues in front of the schools. And when we observe, we're always focusing on student safety. The good news is, the actual amount of traffic in front of the, between the middle school and the high school, the volume is down from previous years because of our soft start at the high school. So the actual number of cars that are going at one time is reduced. What isn't reduced is, we, what's happening is, we do have some middle schoolers riding with high schoolers because they're closer together now, so it makes sense for families to do that. And what's happening is, cars that are typically turning right, coming from Edgerton, turning right to come into the high school parking lot, the student parking lot is actually closer to the tennis court, so further towards Edgerton for where they turn right. And the crosswalk is kind of between the two. So the kids are getting out of their siblings' cars and trying to cross at the crosswalk. Everybody's lined up in the queue like they always have been, taking turns going, turning into the lot. The problem is, people are shooting past on the left a lot faster than the 15 mile per hour posted speed limit, and that's created a hazard for our kids. We shared that with the city government. They referred us to the police department, the police chief, assistant chief, rather. Had conversations with him, followed up with one of our aldermen, because all kinds of things are on the block. You know, if you want to slow down on traffic, you can use different signage. You can use rumble strips, stop signs, crossing guards, and traffic enforcement. Right now, they're focusing on traffic enforcement, but if we continue to have issues with cars still going too fast and not having squad cars there to slow people up, we'll have to continue to see if we can get something to post that crosswalk a little bit better so we don't accidentally have an issue with any of our kids.
You know, I'm on the mayor-appointed Safe Routes to School Committee.
Yeah, I saw they postponed it, too.
Yes, and they postponed the grant request, or we requested the grants already, but they postponed the awarding of the grants until sometime in 2013. So unfortunately, I mean, that's where we could have gotten some money for, you know, the flashing signs or something like that. So if we wanted to do something earlier, we're going to have to do it on our own.
And I'd be willing to investigate some kind of signage, something to better mark the crosswalk, because you know how it is when you're a busy parent dropping kids off? You're not paying attention. You're talking to your kids, telling them to behave while you're riding, and all of a sudden you look down and you're doing 30, and it's 15 miles an hour and the school's on. And you don't notice anything until it's right there. So we want to bring people's attention to the issue faster. Like I said, I don't mind cutting, you know, if we have to cut a couple grand out, but even then, maybe Nancy, you can tell me who I would talk to to get approval, because I don't think we can just put stuff out. And originally, they referred us to the police department, and one of our aldermen said he had a call, but he talked to the police department, and he was satisfied with trying with the enforcement first, so, well, I'm not the president, she is.
Are there two crosswalks? There's one by the tennis court, and there's another one like right in the, like the middle, like?
Yeah, this is-
In the middle going in?
Yeah, there's one further up, or yeah, there's one right in the, it's the one that's right in the middle, between the two parking lots, where the bus, it goes between where the buses let off and our parking lot.
So that's the one you want to mark?
Yeah. And that's the one where one of the moms wrote in and said, and it was actually the day Matt and I were out there when I sent that report to the board, and said, someone wasn't paying attention, and the kid was, the cars in the right turn lane stopped, but people were going around them and not paying attention.
And sometimes if you stop and the student's looking at you, they're not watching, they don't look both way, you know, it's very scary. Like I often will stop to let them through, and I'll think, you know, that way, because maybe the other one isn't going to necessarily stop. So yeah, something needs to be done. And then I've also seen high school students cross, you know, who are coming from Layton on the gym site where there's no crosswalking, you know, they're cutting across over there too. I mean, it's kind of crazy, but I, that middle one, for sure, we probably would do something like that.
What would you suggest?
I think some, you know, some signage, you know? Start with that, and that, and then, you know, see if that works.
Just something to draw attention, to slow it down, to slow down. And to keep the, I would say, you know, periodic traffic enforcement, you know, as a reminder.
That always gets my attention.
Well, if one of our goals, our district goals, is timely and effective communication, why aren't we, why don't we have it posted on our website? Why don't we have it on Infinite Campus? Why aren't we telling the people that we are looking at this? And one thing that we observed is, people are going too fast. If it's about safety for our children, it needs to be out there right away.
Well, I can put something out that I've observed people going too fast, and it's created a hazard for kids trying to use the crosswalk.
Please slow down. I mean, we need to notify the parents.
I don't mind trying that, because it's going to take a while to come up with the right signs, order them. We'll talk to Matt Carstner right away tomorrow afternoon. He's not feeling well right now on the signage part, but maybe I can get together with Eric, and we can put something out, website, and just to, it's come to the point where I could do a quick alert saying, just please slow down.
Yeah.
Same thing is.
I would assume some of these vehicles that go through there, though, really aren't even letting students out. So I mean, we should not assume that 100% of the cars that are going through there are, you know, dropping off students. So I'm all in favor of that communication, Quinn, but, you know, let's, you know, be realistic, to realize that there's other traffic that flows through there that aren't releasing students, that might be the guilty parties of speeding.
Could very well be, but if we notify our parents, then hopefully they'll slow down, and then it's the people that aren't, aren't parents that are going through that, not intersection, but through that street. And I'm not thinking there's too many people going down 116th Street that are not at school at that time. I'm sure there are.
Well, this we can do quickly. The signage is going to take a little more time.
Exactly.
And I think every day, you know, is a hazard, so.
How often are the police out there, Lo?
How often, did you say?
Yeah, how often? Where they're going?
It's the week after we made the contact, probably three out of five, maybe two out of three, or two out of five since then, and maybe haven't, of course, it's only Monday, so I didn't see them today, but.
I know my kid saw them twice. And I've seen them in, it would be spring, coming up from Shet's Park after baseball. And they're picking people off at that time, too. So I mean, they have an awareness to it.
One of the moms said she saw a police officer stop a van. While it was stopping the van, two kids got out, ran across the street from the van that was stopped. So yeah, it's, we have some education to do. Well, yeah, maybe we'll even talk about that in our upcoming newsletter that gets mailed out to everybody.
I'll contact the chairperson of the Safe Routes to School Committee, too, and get them in touch with you, Lo, and see what, you know, they were proposing for the school, and where those things were going to be gotten from, and how much they were, and things like that, so.
Okay. Can you see if they can put out a mobile sign? I know they just, we have an alderman in my neighborhood, many times he gets his hair in a bundle. He, he has the city put out those mobile signs, the speed limit is, or you're going how fast. Talk to the city and just have them put it out there, and just have it active, and say, you know, it's 15 miles an hour from this time to this time, and, you know, and see if that'll deter, to take both the parents and the non-parents that travel up 116th Street, and to see if that makes a difference. That should be no cost to anybody to be able to get that, put that in.
And usually seems that after you see those signs, the police are all checking. So it's a good thing.
Good. I have some action, reaction steps off of that, so thank you.
Anything else? All right, four B, discuss and take possible action on the Whitnell Athletic Co-curricular Code of Conduct. Mr. Ellerton, anything you'd like to say?
I just want to make sure that everybody received a copy of the athletic code, which is highlighted in green sections. And if you have any questions about any of that new stuff that was put in there, I'd be happy to answer your question.
Do we have one for coaches and activity directors? Are they included in here?
We have a coaches handbook, yeah, but it's not part of the student code of conduct.
Okay. That's separate?
It is a separate handbook for all of our coaches.
And I don't, do you formalize these violations in the penalties form? Or this been, this has been longstanding?
Green isn't.
The stuff that's in here in terms of penalties has been around a long time, and we take, we take our guidance from the WIAA on a lot of the regulations that you'll find in here. The WIAA is the minimum standard. Every, every member, every charter member of the WIAA is required to have an athletic code. We are a member, obviously, of the WIAA, so WIAA says the minimum standard in your athletic code is this, this, and this. So a lot of the language in here is really based upon that standard that WIAA sets for. There are things that we can do above and beyond what the WIAA requires. For example, they do not require a 2.0 grade point average. Their standard is the two Fs. Whitnells traditionally have said the two Fs is the minimum standard, but we also require the 2.0, so we can go above and beyond what their minimum standard is.
Yeah. Well, I don't agree with the penalties. I think they're way soft. I think there should be a zero tolerance. For the sale and distribution of drugs, alcohol, or look-alike drugs, 50% of your games are just, I think it's, I think it's way weak. I know you haven't been doing it, but that's my opinion. I think it's zero tolerance, and you move, this is the consequence, you're done. And I guess what it tells me is, I got to enforce that in my own house, if it's not going to be here.
Well, I could tell you that, you know, these are teenage kids, and they're going to make mistakes, and there's, you know, there's got to be, in my opinion, some balance between the appropriate consequence and still teaching a lesson and hope that it doesn't happen again. You know, all of our kids come from different places, and they come with different backgrounds and what they've been taught. And sometimes we are charged with the responsibility of teaching what we would expect in our own homes to be just normal things. Well, they haven't gotten it. And based on, you know, the information that I provided to the board last year about what it means in terms of academic and social success to be a participant in co-curriculars, I think that a zero tolerance policy ignores the reality of, these kids are teenagers, they're going to screw up, and removing them has a, an academic and social consequence that I think, removing them permanently on a first-strike basis, I think is, it's taking away what we, what we stand for, which is teaching kids and giving them an opportunity to correct their mistakes. So that's my issue with zero, zero tolerance is, you give them the consequence, but then they don't have an ability to show you that they've improved, that they can meet your standard. And it's just, it's a conversation worth having, certainly.
Mm-hmm.
Again, teenagers are going to make mistakes, and to have the ability to come back and show you that they learned from it after serving a consequence, I think is important.
My opinion would be, you can do that next year, not half the games this year. So it's my opinion.
You know, I got to agree with Quinn. The one that really stood out to me-
State crime?
-was the sale and distribution. That one really bothers me. And, and, you know, why should that offense be the same as possession? I mean, possession and use versus sale and distribution, to me, is a huge gap and difference. So if, and I don't, you know, if, if these penalties are consistent with WIAA regulations, we also have to realize that you've got, you know, members of the WIAA are, you know, city Milwaukee schools and all the way up to suburban schools. So, you know, I think that there is one that I would recommend that we tighten up, is the sale and distribution. And to me, first offense is, you know, calendar year. That would be my, my-
Sale and distribution indicates some sort of intent and plan to the behavior.
Which also means they probably already possessed and used.
Right. So.
Yeah. So that one bothers me. Notwithstanding what you said, Rick, because I, you know, there is a stigma in your, but I don't, that one really just kind of gnaws at my gut a little bit here.
I understand.
And then, Rick, the paragraph that I was looking at was the injury paragraph. And you and I briefly talked about this, because I was looking for some information on the new concussion guidelines that you-
Hey, TJ, you on it? I followed it. How far in are you? Mine's printed.
On mine, I am under, where am I? Code of Conduct Rules, Misdemeanors, and Violations. And further down on that, it's not cogitated very well on my iPad, sorry about that. Code violations, you talk about injury.
Yes, I'm there.
Okay. In that paragraph, and prior, it's mentioned that physical must be obtained prior to participation, but in view of the new guidelines for concussions, does this, is this verbiage in the injury portion sufficient to cover what we're expected to do for concussions and keeping the release on file and?
Um.
Because I know it does require a doctor's clearance to participate again after an injury.
Yes, I think that if we look at, in the injury paragraph, if an injury occurs, first of all, a student has to be medically cleared to participate. So their physical, their physical tells us that, according to the doctor, that they are eligible. Now, I think what you're saying is, okay, so if I get a physical, it's good for two years. What if I get hurt at some point in there? For us, we keep track of all of the injuries that our kids get. Obviously, if something happens outside of school and we are not aware of it, it does fall on them to communicate to us that there was an injury.
Right.
But we keep track of all injuries that happen with our kids, and they cannot return until they are cleared medically. And I think that the last sentence, rather lengthy, an injury occurs which results in the doctor placing physical restrictions to a student during school day, that athlete cannot participate in co-curriculars until they're medically cleared to return to their academic programming. I think that that is really important, because just recently, we had a kid that could not participate fully in physical education because of a knee injury, and the parent was advocating that they be allowed to continue on the dance team. And this clearly says, you cannot continue to participate until you are cleared to participate fully in your academic school day. So I, I believe that it covers us. There is obviously some responsibility that kids have to communicate to the school if something occurs outside of the school. But yeah, I would say that I think that we're in pretty good shape by saying, if we know of an injury and there's a restriction placed on you, then for you to continue, you have to have medical clearance. And we do track all that, so we are aware.
Do we have in, there's that new concussion, you know, testing that they have to have?
Impact, yes.
Impact testing? Is that in here? Because it's for, you know, for first time? That's new, you know, that, that was new this year, right?
I didn't, I didn't read anything about the new concussion rules in this code. That's why I was thinking the injury paragraph covered that.
Right, but it really should be, probably by physical.
What we have as part of the registration for all of our sports is, part of the registration paperwork requires that parents, athletes, and coaches sign a concussion form that says they understand what concussions are, they understand the signs and symptoms of an athlete who has gotten a concussion, and what these steps have taken place before they can return to competition. That is, not all of that is included in the code of conduct, but it is absolutely required paperwork to participate. We have, in November, I just emailed Dr. Holes today, I'll be presenting Whitnall High School's Concussion Management Plan to the school board. And within that concussion management plan, which is a legal requirement that we have, within that concussion management plan, it outlines clearly what our responsibility is, what the parents, student, and coach's responsibility for concussion. It will not part of the-
We don't need it to be part of it. We should, it should-
No, it doesn't need to be part of the athletic code, however, it needs to be part of registration for athletic.
Any other questions?
And the only other question, part that was highlighted was, that was newer, was the academic ineligible.
Yes.
Is that similar to what other districts, districts are offering? I mean-
We looked at, one of the things that I always thought fell short in the academic component in most athletic code was, a kid goes on academic ineligible, and then they're required to get their grades up. We felt that kids don't necessarily know how to do that. The kids that are ineligible, let's be honest, they're fairly disorganized people to begin with. So what we said is, let's just build it into our code and say, if you become academically ineligible, you're going to have to do these four things that are outlined, and they have to be signed off every single week. We believe that attending the Academic Resource Center during the school day, meeting with your guidance counselor, which is a requirement now, we believe that those things, zero hour is a component, that guidance counselors will use zero hour time to assign kids who are academically ineligible. If you want to continue to be a participant in athletics, you have to meet those four obligations, and within those four obligations, we're going to teach you how to be a better student, hopefully. That is not typical of athletic code that I have seen. Usually, it's, you're not doing real good, you're ineligible, go fix it.
We standard it.
In reference to Mr. Shaw, but the zero tolerance, pardon my pardon, the, the sale and/or distribution of drugs, alcohol, and the like drugs, do we have any track record or any history, have we had any violations of this since you've been athletic director?
No.
Ms. Winters, I'm going to ask you a question, and when it comes to this, are we not bringing these people up for expulsion when they're arrested for this kind of stuff? Or are we having a policy, or what's your pers-
I'm desperate. We haven't had anyone all the way to the end lately. In the time I've been at the base school, we have not had an athlete who has had a violation of sale or distribution.
If, if an athlete or a student does a sale or distribution of drugs, alcohol, or the like drugs, are we, because I know expelled a child years ago for that. Are we bringing them all up for expulsion if they get arrested for this?
We would follow the procedure of doing an administrative review, and making a bigger record, and everything else, and then we could put an action about whatever is recommended.
There's, there's times, though, if they're going to have a beer party and sell glasses for five bucks, and that's the sale of alcohol, and it's off-campus, they're obviously not going to do it here, there is limits to what we can do as athletes. That's where he has more power than the principals do. But the actual party, can we expel someone for having a party? It'd be hard to debate that you could.
Well, we can if he's an athlete?
We can kick him off the team. If an athlete goes to a party after a game, yes, they can get kicked off.
Whatever the penalty is, I can debate with him.
Right. Whatever the discipline is in the penalty.
But we can't do nothing if they are just a regular student?
Not, yeah. If it's, if it has no impact on school, that you can argue, I mean, really have to argue it, if it's a reach.
I would say, there's the clause, and it's worded in a way that is supposed to stick in a kid's mind, and this, this is going to go to an agreement, and then I think maybe there is an adjustment that needs to be made here, where we say hosts lose the most. If you're a host of a party, it doubles, the consequence doubles. And I think that to say, you're using drugs, you lose half of your season, that's bad. But if you're selling and distributing, which probably means you're using as well, now you're committing another offense, I think that it would be fair to say that if you are selling drugs, that maybe you should, first offense, lose the entire season that you're participating. I mean, we're saying that the fine's going to double if you host a party, but we're giving the same consequence. We're not doubling it for selling drugs. It seems to me that we maybe should, maybe we should lose the entire season. And I would be happy to change that. That is not something new. That's why it's not highlighted. That's, that's something that has been in the code.
So if I can get this right from you, one thing I understand is, this is a possible take action, but you need this to be taken action relatively soon.
I'm going to be presenting this on Wednesday.
To the students?
To the students and parents, and I'd like to- And I'd like to have a code in force that we can go forward with so we don't send out next messages about what they should and shouldn't be doing, what their common.
So we want to change, because the motion will be, because I'm going to place forward a motion to accept as presented with the following changes, the sale and/or distribution of drugs, alcohol, or alike drugs, it's 100% of the calendar year. First offense. Would that be an acceptable change to what you're presenting here?
Well, I was thinking we were saying it would be 100% of that season gone. And then the next is 100% of the calendar year. Because we would be losing second offense if we went, we would be going calendar year, calendar year, career.
Is that just per sport or for any sport?
I don't understand.
If a person plays multiple sports and he has a violation in football, does he lose it for all sports or does he just lose it for the football season?
It depends on how much time is left in the season. If it's 50% of the football season and the offense occurs on with two games left, there would be an application to the next sport they play that year, they would have to satisfy an athletic code violation. I'm just asking if we want to say first offense for sale and distribution be 100% of a sports season? Or do we want it to be calendar year, first offense, calendar year, second offense, and then high school career? How is it that we want that to be worded?
I look at it this way, let's say you've got a student that plays one sport and they're caught sale and distribution at the very end of the season and they don't play any other sport. You know, chances are, if it's sale and distribution, especially, you know, if it's anywhere on school property, I mean, we're going to probably bring them up for expulsion, him or her. So, you know, that's the only kind of flaw in the 100% of the season, I agree with you. You know, there's not much penalty if they got one game left and, you know, but, but if they were participating in another, a second sport, and that can carry over to that sport, you know, I'm not sure how we word that, Rick, but I'm sure we can come up with something.
Yeah.
The thing, my suggestion would be, be 100% for a calendar year. Because if it happens, using the example, if it happens at the end of the year, it's a calendar year. They're eligible to play at the end of that next calendar year for the first offense. This, the offense is pretty egregious. I mean, the sale and distribution is probably the, you're right, kids make mistakes. Do you know what I mean? You want to have an opportunity. This is beyond an opportunity.
Sure.
So 100% for a calendar year, and I'm sorry, second offense is high school career. I mean, it's just, high school, it's 100% calendar year, college, high school career, high school career. And no-
They never get to the third offense.
Right, that's my point. Because by then, if it's, if it is the case, then I'm, I'm in hopes that our administration, because that would have had to have happened, if it happened on the school property, would come up for immediate expulsion. If it happened outside of the school property, it's something that we didn't have control of, but we did find out about it, it's 100% the consequences of it would be severe on this specific topic. So I'm, that's where I want to see it. I don't want anybody else thinks about it, but I would like to see 100% calendar year.
For first offense.
First offense, second offense is high school career, period.
The only thing with that is, is that's the same argument as Bernie. If it happens in December, January, they're eligible to play sports.
I'm not looking, no, no, if that's how you're, if that's how you're defining, all right.
You say one year.
Then we don't want to-
I would say the academic year.
Yeah.
And you have to say academic year.
And I think we could do that. Is there ineligible, first offense, sale and distribution, they're ineligible to participate in any sport for the academic year, including whatever it is, June 15th or whatever.
I think we can cover all our bases by saying first offense, 365 days.
There we go. That's what I was getting at. That's how it is.
He was just playing junior.
Into the following year.
Right.
It'll happen though.
If I go back to the example, if there's two, if you only play football and you get in trouble with two games left in the football season, in June, when the academic year ends, you would have only served two games of suspension, but the next school year starts up, you're eligible to start football again. Whereas if we say 365 days, you got that thing with two football games left, it's going to come all the way around, you're going to miss the first seven games of the next year, and then you're eligible again for the last two.
Yep.
That covers you completely.
But that's-
So just say 365 days from the date of offense.
Yeah. I would think that that's fine.
You can write that up, the way you want to word it now. I mean, because I, I know you need, you need to have this. You want it, this, unfortunately, this is something that was dropped, because this originally came up to us when Jill was still here. Now that Jill's gone, we need to finalize all this.
What did you say about hosting a party, though? You said something else, Rick, that you-
Hosts lose the most. So if you're at a, if you're at a party, you're going to lose 25% on your first offense if you're being at a party. If you're the host of that party, you lose 50%.
Okay. So that-
So are you ready to make a motion?
I think so. Do this with another discussion.
Well, what about charged with a state crime? That's at 50%. Would that be?
First of all, I don't like the word charged. Charged and convicted are two different things.
The problem with that is that it takes a long time to get convicted. They could be out of high school by that time.
I know, but we do live in a society that you're innocent for proving guilty.
Not Hollywood.
We're not in Kelly-
We're not Hollywood.
You're right.
I think what, I think what we have to remember, though, is the minimum standard from the WIAA is that if you're charged, this is, this language comes from the WIAA. And according to their rules, which we are bound to, if you're charged, you lose 50%.
We've just answered the question.
Yeah.
Then they have an appeal process to WIAA.
Absolutely.
For that process, give me, okay. Make a motion to present the Catholic-
Approve.
Make a motion to approve the Whitno High School Athletic and Co-Curricular Code of Conduct as presented with the following changes. The sale and/or distribution of drugs, alcohol, or like, alike, look-alike drugs be changed from 50% to 100% for a, to 365 days for the first offense. Second offense is high school career.
Kathy, can you read that back just to make sure that we got it right?
Yeah, please. Make motion to approve the Whitno High School Athletic and Co-Curricular Code, the sale and/or distribution of drugs, alcohol, or look-alike drugs be changed to 100%. No.
No.
Be changed to first offense.
Suspension. Put in the word suspension for-
Suspension for 365 days from the date of the offense.
Right.
The second offense would be suspension for the high school.
You got it.
All right. I just have one question.
Yes.
The other spots where we say calendar year, did we want those specified or as 365 days or those also?
I think they change, you change them all to 365.
I agree with that, to be consistent.
Where else have a, where is a reference?
Well, anyone, or second offenses.
Oh, right here?
And third offenses for possession of alcohol.
Who's second in my motion?
I did.
Quinn.
Friendly amendment?
Well, Quinn, I'd like, well, I don't know what the procedure is, but I would like to say, as everything you just said, with the addition that anywhere in this document, calendar year, to represent 365 days. Would that be acceptable to you?
Acceptable.
Does that suffice of what you were saying?
All right. Any other discussion on that?
I have one more thing, sorry. We talk about out-of-school suspension, but we don't even think about in-school suspension. Should it be?
Well, although it is not in here for whatever reason, suspension of any kind carries the same weight, whether it be in or out of school.
Maybe we need to add in slash out.
Yeah. Because, like I said, it carries the same weight.
And I know some of our discussions have been that we kind of prefer in-school suspension. You know, maybe out of school, so.
Right.
Quinn.
Yes, sir.
Jay, you going to make another amendment?
Anywhere it says out-of-school suspension to include the words in and/or out-of-school suspension.
Captain.
Thank you.
May I make another amendment? I think that there are times that an in-school suspension is very different than an out-of-school suspension. There are times that it's, you know, it's maybe deserving more of a detention. And honestly, we don't have a lot of in-school suspensions, but I'm not sure that I think that an in-school suspension equals an out-of-school.
Would you not want to call that a detention?
Well, if you remove them from instruction for a portion of the day, then in-school suspension is not a detention.
You could call it a detention, though, right?
Sure. Call it anything you want. I'm just, to me, what would be in there is suspension makes sense. If you're suspended from school, if you're, whatever the incident was, was serious enough that we said you couldn't be present in school, then that to me equates to an athletic code violation.
Quinn.
You make a decision that it's an in-school suspension that I'm not sure that-
I think you're going down a road, though, you don't want to go right now. I mean, because another principal, like me, for instance, if I was high school principal, I'd do almost all in-school suspensions unless it was a violent issue. But that's a, that's a principal decision, and I wouldn't take it away from one of my principals. We'll have discussions about it. But, so I don't think that should be part of this discussion right now. It's, because that's totally separate and it has to do with everyday activity.
Would it be acceptable just to change the word to school suspension?
The suspensions, yeah, drop out and in and-
Right.
All suspensions.
Make it suspension.
Yep.
Quinn.
Yes, sir.
Another amendment. Poor Kathy.
Let's go.
You're telling me here. I'm just getting even. Just getting even. Maybe sign all those paperwork this today. Quinn, I'm going to remove my entire motion from the table. Is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Here we go. Here we go.
Start over now?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, I need a front page again, please. That's all I need. Make a motion to accept, as presented, the Whitno High School School Athletics and Co-Curricular Code of Conduct with the following changes. Wherever it reads calendar year, it is to represent 365 days from the first offense. Specifically, sale and/or distribution of drugs, alcohol, or look-alike drugs would be first offense, 100%. Second offense, high school career. Wherever in this document it is presented as an out-of-school suspension, we change it to read school suspension.
No, because I thought that the sale and distribution of drugs was going to be 365 days.
Right.
From the date of the-
He said 100%.
Well, he said 100% actually when he, when he already changed.
But then he qualified that by saying, in any portion of this document refers to calendar year.
The calendar year is not 100%.
He defined it 365 days as first offense. I mean, that's the way he presented it.
You know, yeah, okay.
So that one would read 100% of 365 days. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion? Kathy, you got the motion?
Need a second, though.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on this?
Can we hear the motion?
Motion to approve the Whitno High, as presented, the Whitno High School Athletic Code with the following changes. Wherever it reads calendar year, it represents 365 days from the date of the offense. The sale and distribution of drugs, alcohol, or look-alike drugs would be 100% which equals the calendar year, 365 days. And, um, anytime a student is in the front of, I lost it, there we go. Anytime it is presented as suspension, it will be school suspension.
You kind of have the second offense in there.
Oh, yes, second offense, I lost my second. Second offense will equal high school career. And that's on sale and distribution of drugs, alcohol, and/or look-alike drugs.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? All right. Oh, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Yay. There you go, Rick. That was a yay.
Yay.
That was a yay, we finally got it. All right, 4C, block party wrap-up.
All right, we'll try to make it short and sweet after that last item there, so we can all get out at a decent hour here, but-
There's no motions on this, so that's okay.
All right, that's good. So Cheryl and I just want to give you a quick wrap-up here on how successful our block party was this year. It was our third annual and it was our best one yet. Cheryl and I worked very hard to collect nearly $8,000 in cash sponsorships this year from local businesses here in the community. And we're pleased to say, I emailed Dr. Holtz recently, that our final bottom line amount here that will support all the fine arts programs in the district is $6,754.49. So, so what Cheryl and I, you know, we were talking about is, when that money gets spent, we would just like a report from all of the principals as far as what they've used that money for, because we actually, actually this summer, we've actually used that as a good selling point when we went out and talked to businesses to seek sponsorships and to gain support from that. So we would like to see that again. Because of the sponsorship money that we collected this summer, we were able to bring back a lot of the attractions that we've had in the past, as well as add a couple new things as well, so. Yes, yes, that were requested by the students, so.
A great job, you guys. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Do I get all the money from that?
Doug, to that, to this point, Bernie's questions were never really answered when it came to the voucher, the voucher pay of $6,300. Is there a possibility you can break out into separate costs center?
Sure.
So we can see that?
I would do that.
Quick financial.
Yeah, I won't go into all of it now. I will do that and send it to you. I already was making some notes about getting back to the board to explain how we handle stuff like that.
Perfect.
But all those costs were taken out before this profit was realized.
This is the net.
Right.
All right. Right.
All right, number five, comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration. Anything?
Yes. Yes. While I liked, I, I really enjoyed the two high school kids we had here last week for the, our last meeting. I think we have to remember that we have four schools that have four student councils and I think it would be good to have all the student councils in the rotation and have those kids also realize and be up here for a chance to tell us about their individual schools. So I'd like to have them in the rotation. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, number six, board member announcements. Anything?
Yeah, this is the last board meeting before the November 6 election, so I'd just like to remind everybody who's listening to make sure you vote November 6.
Anything else?
Um, the goals. Don't they need to come up for-
Is that an announcement?
No, but.
That's for future consideration, right? Or is it just-
We're past that already, but-
We've got two sessions coming up on it, scheduled.
Any other announcements? All right. Then number seven, motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851(c) to discuss administrator contracts. Is there a motion?
Second.
I think that was a, that was a Bernie and, uh, one second. All right, a roll call vote. Eileen?
Uh, am I doing?
Yes.
Yes. We're going to a closed session, yes.
TJ?
No.
Bernie?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Nancy, yes. All right, we're adjourned.